To the Cumberland School Committee meeting today, Thursday, April 26, 2018, at 7:14 PM. The clock in the back is wrong. I would ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next item on the agenda is the Approval of the Agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demonic makes a motion to approve the agenda. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Denon. All in favor? The eyes have it. I would also like to state for the record that Mrs. Friedman is not present at tonight's meeting. Next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report. Student Activities. Please come up and state your name. Hello, welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ty Skeldon, and I am the Junior Class Vice President.
And my name is Brianna Nguyen. I'm the Sophomore Class President.
So, to talk about the month of April, on Friday, April 6, the Spring Fling was held at 12 Acres Banquet Hall in Smithfield, Rhode Island. This is the first time that we had it at an outside location, and it was a huge, successful event, and had a large turnout. The third quarter ended on April 10, and we are ready to push through to the fourth quarter. April break took place from the 14th till the 22nd. The monthly student government meeting was held on Tuesday, April 24, in Ms. Berthium's room. April 26 through the 29, the seniors who were attending the trip are going on the Grad Night Disney Trip. On Monday, April 30, the government representatives will be volunteering at the blood drive during the day at school, and the blood drive will be held in here in the trans cafeteria.
Now, for May, on Friday, May 4, the Junior Prom will be held at Venus de Milo in Swansea, Massachusetts. Everyone is looking forward to a great time. May 7 through the 12th is Teacher Appreciation Week, where the staff and teachers are recognized for all their hard work they do throughout the year. Tickets for the senior reception begin this week. It will be held on May 11 at the Atlantic Newport. The National Honor Society and Rhode Island Honor Society induction ceremonies will be on Tuesday, May 22, where students with academic excellence will be rewarded by being inducted into these honorary clubs.
Thank you. Okay, did you have anything else?
No, you're good.
Thank you for the update. Very good. Next item on the agenda, the Consent Agenda. Approval of Minutes for Regular Meeting 4/12/2018. In the Approval of Minutes for Executive Session 4/12/2018. I believe we were tabling these, yes. Thank you, Mr. Denon. Okay, next item on the agenda, Report. Do we? Yep. Thank you. Mr. Denon makes a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of 4/12/2018. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorillo. All in favor? Eyes have it, 6-0. To table. Mr. Denon makes a motion to table the minutes of Executive Session 4/12/2018. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorillo and Mr. Demonica. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Report out of Executive Session Meeting. Report of Executive Session Meeting 4/26/2018. There were no executive session votes. Vote to seal the minutes of executive session. Do I have a motion? Mr. Demonica makes a motion. Second by Mr. Hess. All in favor? Against? Eyes have it, 6-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I have three items to share with you this evening, and first, we have Linda Ioneta, our EL Coordinator here this evening, and she has some information that she would like to share with you. In fact, you have at your seats a document that she has shared with you that she will be reviewing with the committee. Mrs. Ioneta.
Hello, welcome, Mrs. Ioneta. How are you?
Hi, nice to see everybody, and thank you for having me tonight. We started something new, but yet it's really something old. A very long time ago, there used to be parent education classes in town. I don't even remember how long it's been since they have been here. But I had a conversation in last, 2016, with Mark Fiorillo and Mr. Demana about starting a parent English class. It's not a GED program, but start a parent English class. So, I was new to the job, and I thought, okay, this is one thing that we're going to try. And we started by investigating. Who's going to teach it? Who's going to come? Where is it going to be? What are the materials? How much is this going to cost? And so, I started researching different agencies, also talked to teachers that are employed by the Cumberland School Department, and found that it would be better to go to an outside agency. So, I started talking with different people, and I found this fabulous group out of the Providence Public Library. They're called the Rhode Island Family Literacy Initiative, known as RIFLA. And I've talked to Chris Bure, and he was so accommodating and so understanding and helped us through this whole process. And by the end of June, when we wrote the Title III, we wrote enough money in to start the program. So, we start this, this school year. We sent out, we made a memorandum with the RIFLA, and again, he kept talking me through everything we needed to do, told me it was going to be fine. I was a worrywart that it wasn't going to be fine. We sent out surveys to the parents at BF Norton School. We wanted to start small, and we had 40 responses. Out of those 40, we contacted those 40, and 14 people said they would be interested in coming. So, in January, we waited till after the holidays. In January, we set out. We were going to start in February, and we only got about seven responses confirmed. So, I was like, okay, seven's, it's a little disappointing, but it's seven. So, that first night when we started, we had no one show up for a while. And they were all there from RIFLA, and they said, don't worry, this has already happened to us before. They'll come. And that night, that first night, we had three ladies that came. Those three ladies have been to every single class. One dragged her husband along, and another one brought another friend along. They come to BF Norton School. It's going to last for 13 weeks, so we're well into it now. They come from 5 to 7 o'clock. Two of them bring their children along. We have a really great gal from the high school that's a senior that's doing her service learning with us. She takes the children into one of the classrooms. They do art projects. They play basketball in the gym, and they do other activities on the computer. And the best part of all of this, it's grown from three people to five people. One night, we had seven people. But I have to be honest, we really average about four to five people every week. What the two teachers do, they interviewed each one of these people. They gave them a little reading test, and they put them at ease. I will tell you, the first night when I was there, these ladies, their shoulders were up over their ears, and they didn't want to say anything. And they did the typical, shook their head and smiled. Well, it was later in that evening, they all started talking about food, and the three ladies relaxed. And in, we have two people that speak Spanish and one person that speaks Syrian, and they just could all communicate, and all the tension was broken. So, what they did is they've set two levels. We have some beginners, and they focus just on basic vocabulary, making sentences, asking questions. And the other group is a little bit more advanced. They work on reading comprehension. But the part that I like the best is they put situations that they are going to interact in. So, for a couple of weeks, they were talking about what would you do on a job interview? And they talked them through all of what they would need to do and the expressions that they may need. The next couple of weeks, they worked on what happens when you go to the hospital, you go to a doctor's visit. And so, they talked them through that. Last, this past Monday night, they asked me to get copies of report cards, and they said, what do you do when you go to a parent teacher conference or when your report card comes home in English, and you can't understand it? It was really eye-opening for me, because as I'm reading, listening to them read the report card, they had no understanding of what those indicators were and how to understand how their children were doing. So, we're still working through that. And then, I asked the ladies if they would mind telling me what, what this means to them. And on one of the page in the packet, I'm going to read what these ladies had to say. These are the three ladies that come all the time, but there is a common theme among each of these. So, one of the ladies said, I need English for everything in this country. At doctor's appointments, hard to understand. I want to help my daughter with homework. I go to supermarket. I try to talk, but I get nervous. I want a better job. The second lady said, I want to help my children. I want to communicate better with teachers to talk and understand. I want to be comfortable to talk with others. And the last lady is a lady who just came from Syria. They're refugees, and she has three children, two at the high school, one at BF Norton School. And she is, she's an absolute wonder. She says, I want to be good in English. Contact with society, work and study, and help my children. I'm here to practice my communication with others. I know the words and the grammar, but hard to have conversations. My goal is to make myself better. So, what we're doing is a small seed, but it's a really good thing that we're doing. So, what are we going to do next year? Well, I'd like to get a little bigger. I would like to conduct, I'm going to write it into the Title III grant again. I would like to have a fall and a spring session. I would like to reach out to McCourt Middle School to parents. We've housed it at BF Norton. I was thinking about trying to move it to the library, because then we're at the library, and there's books, and there's activities for the children that are there. I still would like to work with the same agency. So, that's our little report, and thank you, Mr. Fiorillo, for bringing that idea to us. Does anybody have any questions?
Excellent. Anyone on the committee? Mr. Fiorillo?
Mrs. Ioneta, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know that Tony and I have talked about this for years, and the thing that was always holding us back was the lack of an ELL Coordinator. So, and I know Mr. Mitchell's supported it, even, I think, even Dr. Thornton supported it, but we just never had the staff and the personnel to make it happen. And I think this is extremely important to the community. It'll help parents help their children in school with their report cards and with their lessons, but also, it'll help parents whose children have special needs work through an IEP session or getting the help that they need for a 504 accommodation. This is just essential stuff, and I think it's great, and I'm very thankful that this is happening.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo.
Mrs. Ioneta, I've said this, I mean, personally, probably a thousand times, but at this meeting, I know I've said it several times. Food brings people together, right?
It does.
Makes them feel warm, makes them feel comfortable. It brings them together. It's a happiness that we have.
Well, it's funny, because the lady, one of the ladies that's an instructor gives homework, and she bribes, just like I used to bribe kids in school, she brings treats for the, for the students. And now, the, the students, the ladies, are bringing food. So, each night, there's something that goes back and forth.
What are they making?
Yeah. We've had chocolate and cookies. We've had some other cookies that I don't know the names of, but they're really good.
Oh, Mr. Demonica.
Mrs. Ioneta, I see that we're, you know, going to reach out to parents at BF and McCourt.
And McCourt, yep.
Can we expand that any further in the district to the other elementary schools? I mean...
We can. We can reach out. It depends what our capacity is and how much. We wrote it in, it is part of the ESA regulations, and part of the EL portion is to reach out and have activities for parents. So, we can, depending how much money we get for Title III, we can find out how much it would cost, and we can reach out. We can certainly do that.
I mean, I think the district has 23 languages spoken.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. I mean, so it's just not limited to BF and McCourt, and I think if, you know, you can not fill a full classroom, but, you know, get more people from the other schools would be helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Denon? Thank you for doing this, and thank you to Mr. Fiorillo for, for starting it off. When do you find out about the, the grant money? And is it guaranteed, or how does that work?
Um...
You know?
When do we find it? I don't know that.
Okay. May. Thank you.
I have had conversations on the past year with members of the community that would be willing to provide us some grant money.
And that would help us immensely.
For this project.
Thank you again for your support.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Mitchell?
Just a couple of more things, very quickly, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mrs. Ioneta. There was work done over the April vacation at four of our schools. We actually did quite a bit of work, an amazing amount of work, it seems to me, during a relatively short period of time. We have been painting classrooms at Cumberland Hill, and we're very close to having most of the rooms painted there. We also, as you may recall, had to finish some work that was done last summer. So, a rug was removed and tile was used to replace the rug, and, and you actually have a picture in your drawing. I know that Mr. Chandler has the work that was done up on the screen. There you see the painting. You know, there's a ladder. That was one of the rooms that was painted. You see the new floor installation at Cumberland Hill. There was a, a new drop ceiling put in at Community School. That picture is there as well. We also needed to complete the work that was started this summer at Garvin Elementary School, and a new floor was installed there. And there were also, there was also some work done at BF Norton Elementary School. There was the installation of outdoor light signage and, and a light to, to light that up. And there was also something called the Heat Trace System for the metal roof, and that would, that was installed to prevent freezing. You know, we had a problem there a couple of years ago that was related to the freezing, and this will help to prevent those icicles that, you know, there's some concern about, you know, there's some, there was some pretty sizable icicles hanging from BF Norton Elementary School, and this device, this Heat Trace System, will eliminate that from happening. So, a lot of work done in a very short period of time, and I, I know that right through Sunday evening, I must acknowledge Will DeJesus and the amount of time that he spent here last week, and I think right up until Sunday night, he was here making sure that all the work was done. So, I'd like to publicly acknowledge him for his effort and commitment in seeing these projects through. And last but not least, Mr. Chairman, I just want to share some of the work that is being planned for the summer, and I think it's important for everyone to know that a tremendous amount of time and effort goes into planning. So, not only do we decide which projects we're going to focus our attention on, but it requires a tremendous amount of, of coordination. For example, a lot of work is going to be done in this building. In fact, this room is going to be off limits, because asbestos abatement is going to be done in this building, new flooring put in. And as you know, this is where all of the private school book work is done. This is where private school parents drop off their books, and this is where they get their new ones for the upcoming school year. So, we're going to have to coordinate that. That's just one example. So, there is actually work being done at every school this summer, above and beyond the usual cleaning that takes place. And I know that you all, I believe, have a list of those things that are going to be done, and some of the work is, is fairly extensive. So, for example, we have, the Extended School Year Program has historically been held here at the high school because of the volume of work that's going to be done here. We needed to relocate, and we've already started planning the relocation of ESY to McCourt Middle School. So, I know that word is getting out that this work is going to be done, and we know that one of the, one of the things that we need to do is to communicate with staff so that they can plan accordingly. And we are meeting weekly. In fact, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday with the architect, the, the, the construction manager, and all of our people who will be involved in, you know, coordinating and planning the, all of the moving that has to take place. So, you, you have that list, extensive amount of work, and I just, I, I, I just need to state publicly also that a tremendous amount of work has taken place in this district on facilities over the last five years. I think an impressive amount of work, which requires, you know, a great deal of, of preparation, and probably, and, and I don't, you know, want to be inaccurate when I say this, but I, I got to believe that the work that's been done in the last five years is probably more than the, the work that had been done in facilities and the, other than the wellness center and the work at the high school, more than the previous 10 years combined. So, a lot of good work is happening, is, is the point that I wanted to make. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Excellent. Excellent update, Mr. Mitchell. Thank you. Mrs. Goggan, yes?
Mr. Mitchell, I'm sorry if I missed it. Did the lights get replaced in the wellness center?
The, I'm glad you asked that question, two things. One, we had hoped that the lights would be replaced in the wellness center, and as you may recall, rather than rent a lift to replace those lights, we decided to purchase one. And when we made the decision to purchase the lift, I, I was told that because of the, the amount of time that it took us to make the decision or finally get approval from the school committee, that particular lift was sold. However, another lift actually is coming to us tomorrow. So, the lift, not only will the lift be delivered tomorrow, the Kubota that you all approved for purchase is also going to be delivered tomorrow. So, we're going to get two new toys that will allow us to get this work done. So, I'm glad you mentioned that. I, I had, I was going to mention that myself, and as soon as that lift comes in, we're going to get right on that light situation at the wellness center. Thank you.
Mr. Denon?
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. So, on that note, so it's listed as a summer project, right? The replacement of lighting throughout the wellness center. I guess I just want to make sure that we, we do the lights before commencement.
Well, here is, here is the plan that has been explained to me, because as you may recall, lights can be replaced, but our, we made a decision to do it correctly by putting in energy-efficient lighting, which I guess requires that we also have to replace, they're not fixtures there. Okay, so, so we're going to, we're going to do it right, and what Will explained to me, that the, the plan is to focus on the center court first. They're going to focus their attention on that first, make sure that that's done, and then they'll, you know, and they'll get that done ASAP, and, and I'll make sure that that is done before graduation, and then they'll work on those, the, the outer thirds when that gets done first.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Chairperson's Report. Fiscal Year 2018 Budget Update. Nothing to report on that. The next item on the Chairperson's Report is an update, pool update from Rep. Jimmy Mack. Jimmy, come up to the microphone. Rep., so this, this is the first, so I've been on the school committee almost six years?
Yeah, six years.
I'm glad to see that we were able to get you on the agenda to come and speak officially, rather than on public comment.
Thank you so much.
The floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention, you know, I know there's overall concern, you know, in reference to the swimming pool, you know, the ventilation system. Working with superintendent, members of the school committee, I feel very confident that we'll be able to get that situation squared away. I just need a little sidebar with the superintendent and, you know, so on, so forth. What I'd like to also bring to your attention is some of the upcoming bills. There's a bill in by Representative Bennett, which would allow retired teachers to basically come back and teach from the, I believe the maximum is 90 days now. It's going to be extended to 100, 100 days, which, you know, could alleviate some situations, you know, in the shortage of teachers, you know? So, with that said, oh, another profound, I, I was just so elated today. We had all the students from BF Norton, the elementary children, two buses of them, okay? They did a mock version at the State House, you know, and they got a grand tour, and they were allowed to express their opinion on three different bills pertaining to, you know, school, everything from school buses to, it was pretty cool, you know?
Did it pass?
Huh?
Did it pass?
Surprisingly, the seat, the seatbelt issue got shot down. Yeah. Now, I don't know whether, you know, they had comprehension, complete comprehension of, you know, the safety features involved, and the process was vetted shortly, so I'll leave it like that, you know?
Excellent.
And I, there was an area of concern I'd like to bring up to you, you know, to the superintendent, administration, and members of the school committee. Some of the teachers expressed at BF Norton the problem with, you know, the no air conditioners. Gets kind of stuffy in the classroom, and I, I believe that pertains to a, a lot of elementary schools, you know? So, something we could address and look at, you know, in the near future, you know? Even if it were fans to alleviate these, you know, that situation. But if you have any questions, and, you know, while I'm here, please feel free to, you know...
Pleasure of the committee. Does anybody have a question for Rep. McGlaughlin? Mr. Demonica?
Rep., is the $400,000 free from the state, or is there...
All indications are, they're looking for a finalization, a number, you know, basically cost. A memorandum of understanding will be put in place, and, you know, I'm told that, with, with that said, they're ready to sign it, so as soon as we can get a, an official number, you know? Are there any other? I know it's budget time, crunch time, you know? How are we doing there?
We're working on it, Rep.
Let you know. We'll let you know in June when the council votes.
We need to hear from the, the mayor and the, and the council as to how much they're going to give us.
I've already expressed, you know, areas of concern in that, in that matter.
Hope in the stars, the moon, and the sun all align.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Rep. Have a great night. Next item on the agenda, Reports of Standing, Standing Committees. Payment of Bills. Mr. Demonica?
The chairman, there is no payment of bills tonight.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Fiscal Management Subcommittee Update.
Fiscal, fiscal did meet tonight. We have a bunch of contracts on the agenda tonight that went through fiscal that we discussed, and I think they're coming up later in your agenda for approval, if I'm correct? Yes, they're coming up later, so I'll be making recommendations at that point in time.
Thank you.
And that would be it. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Mr. Fiorillo?
Policy and Procedures did not meet this week. We will meet in two weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorillo. Next item on the agenda, Achievement in Communications Subcommittee Update. Mr. Denon?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet. The Achievement in Communications Subcommittee met earlier this week on Tuesday night, and we had a presentation from Mr. Demana and his staff about their plans for the next two years academically, their academic, the academic plan. We got through only the elementary school plan. What remains are the middle school and high school, which we will schedule at some point in the future. I have to say, I was very impressed. Number one, with the plan and all the, the work that went into it and the, the different, the vast array of things that they're tackling, it's pretty impressive. But also, the discussion we had was great, and I kind of wish, I wish everyone were there. Mrs. Goggan and I and Mr. Hess were there. So, hopefully, we can maybe have a similar discussion, maybe as a full committee at a future meeting, just to talk about some of these things. But the, it's an important topic, like while we were having this discussion, I realized this is why we're all here, to, to make sure that our students have the opportunities that, that we, all the opportunities we can get for them, and, and that they, you know, reach proficiency and all that. So, it was fruitful. We, one of the areas that we, we started talking about that... We, one of the areas that we, we started talking about that I'd like us to go into a little bit more are enhancements we can make to our buildings that I think we don't talk much about. We talk a lot about fixing things, but we don't talk about improving the classrooms to make them better learning environments for students. We, I think some of us, you know, we talk about it once in a while, but we never really tackle it as a, as a committee. And I think, given the, how the governor is hoping to have more money available for, for projects like this, it seems like a no brainer that we would at least think in these terms. Also, if we're, we're going to go out for a bond, because our classrooms are dated and they're not made for, for this century. So, little things like the science curriculum calls for having sinks in every classroom. Or without a sink, you can't do everything you could do. And I, I'm not saying we could put a sink in every classroom, but we could be strategic about it and so things like that. Certainly configurations, we've talked about desks and having them in rows and, and, you know, we still use the desks today that I used as a kid when I went to the school. And the desks were really well made, but they're not made for, for 2018 and beyond. So, things like that, I'd, I'd love to have a discussion about in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennan. Excellent update. Mr. Demona, maybe we should, whoa, now maybe, let's get it on our open meeting for in two weeks, a presentation that you, I'd love to see it.
Yeah, so I, I just want to thank you, Mr. Demonic. You, you maybe, you have to do the middle school and the high school, so let's talk about the scheduling.
Okay. All right, I apologize.
Thank you.
Let's wait, we'll wrap it all up and bring it in. Next item on the agenda, comments from the public. Anyone who would like to step up to the podium, share some thoughts, concerns? Right, hearing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda, new business, discussion in a vote to approve employee contracts. Mrs. Vogel, would you like to step up to the microphone? Mrs. Vogel, so we have listed nine approval of employee contracts. We are going to table a few of them.
Yeah, we're gonna table two, five, and seven and nine.
Two, seven and nine. So, we're gonna, we're going to table five. So, thank you, Mr. Dennan. Mr. Dennan makes a motion to table the assistant superintendent, the director of human resources, the director of special services and the superintendent's contract. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor? Eyes have it, six, zero. Mrs. Vogel, so tonight, we're also going to vote to approve the employee contracts. Remaining five, correct?
Yes, they went through fiscal, so I don't know if Mr. Demonic wants to.
Chairman, so we did talk a little bit about them tonight in fiscal. They are budgeted for next year's.
I apologize, there's, there's six.
So, they were talked about upstairs. They are budgeted for next year. They have the same stipulations as the other ones that we had two weeks ago, except we're dealing with stipends. So, we have teach, high school principal, number A, Mrs. Carter. And it was a three to zero vote to approve the contract as recommended by the superintendent upstairs. So, I've moved passage of her contract.
Let's, we could probably take these all together, if you don't mind.
We have B, the other high school principal, I mean assistant principal, Mrs. McMorro, that was approved on a three to zero vote. We have the athletic director's position that was approved on a three to zero vote. The business manager's position on a three to zero vote. Director of information and technology, three to zero vote, three to zero vote, excuse me. And we have the new contract for the high school principal that will be starting July first, and that was approved on a three to zero vote as well. I'd move passage.
Thank you, Mr. Demonic. So, Mr. Demonic, your recommended passage?
It passed upstairs in a three to zero vote for all those positions.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorillo.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion, yes.
We're voting on all of these at once. There's no introduction about the principal or anything about like that. Is that correct?
Oh, it's just a contract, so a little bit later on in the agenda. Discussion in a vote to approve the appointment of the high school principal. It's in the subsection B. So, this is discussion in a vote to approve the employee contracts.
So, we, we approve a contract before the appointment, is that usually what?
Mr. Adams?
You're, oh.
That's usually been the course. You don't need to do it that way, but that's certainly appropriate.
I would just say that you're approving the framework of the contract. If you don't approve the appointment, then the contract wouldn't go forward. So, you're just approving, you know, the contract as written.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorillo, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Next item on the agenda, discussion in a vote to approve the appointed, appointment of high school principal. Mrs. Vogel.
Thank you. So, I just wanted to come up and give you a brief summary regarding the interview committee recommendations. So, the interview committee met on Wednesday, March twenty eighth. We interviewed four candidates. We had a, we gave each candidate approximately an hour. They were really, I would say, really good interviews. There were a number of people, I'm gonna read you off the people who were on the committee just so you kind of get an idea, but just kind of in general, we had a school committee member, parent slash town council member, all content area leaders at the high school administration. So, I'll read you the names. So, Karen Friedman, Lisa Bolio, Kate McMorro, Michelle Carter, Heather Delfino, Chris Skirka, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Amanda Latoyl, Jessica Rock, Colin Smith, Melissa Kuzinitz, Lori Emery, Justine Loizell, Sergio DiCosta, Jay Masterson, Mike Chandler, Scott Carpenter, Rachel Santa, Tony Demona, Anthony Silva, and I facilitated. So, those are the people who were on the committee. We had a very robust discussion, I believe that we deliberated for probably about two and a half hours to make sure that we felt that we had the best decision for the high school. And it was a unanimous decision to recommend Aldofo Costa to Mr. Mitchell. And so, we did so. And then Mr. Mitchell, who he can speak about it, and Mr. Demona met with Mr. Costa a second time to address any questions that the committee had following the first interview.
Thank you. Mrs. Vogel, any questions from the committee? Mr. Mitchell, would you like to say a few words?
Of course. So, the, this was an, an interesting situation in that the committee, which was, I think, representative group of all of the constituents in the district, submitted one name to me, that was Mr. Costa. And, and I know that there were some other very talented individuals who were interviewed. And given the fact that, you know, Mr. Costa was the only person that was forwarded to me, I, along with Mr. Demona, spent a tremendous amount of time in conversation with him about the district, specifically the high school and the direction that we expected the high school to move in. I also had an opportunity to talk with Mr. Costa on several occasions subsequent to that meeting. And I feel, for a number of reasons, I, I think the most important of which is the fact that Mr. Costa was the unanimous person on the part of the committee to lead the high school. And I am comfortable after the many conversations that we've had, that, you know, he is the person for the job. So, I do support the recommendation of the committee.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Costa is here. Mr. Costa, would you like to step up to the microphone and answer about seventy-five questions that we have? Just kidding. Say a few words? Welcome. It's great to have you back in the building.
Thank you so much. I really do appreciate it. Opportunity to lead this high school would mean so much to me. And, you know, after numerous discussions, I, I feel as if I'm, I'm so prepared with the, the four work, four years of work that I have completed here. You know, I, I think about the staff at the high school and I think about this district's commitment to students, students first. And it's something that I sure want to be a part of for many years to come. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Costa. Any further questions from the school committee? Discussion? Pleasure of the committee on a vote. Mr. Demonic makes a motion to approve the appointment of the high school principal. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dennan, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six, zero. I apologize. Nay? Okay. Motion passes, five to one. Welcome aboard, Mr. Costa. Yes, please.
I just, I can't begin to explain how fortunate I feel right now. I want to thank the school committee. I want to thank the superintendent and the interview committee for the opportunity to lead C H S. I look forward for being an educational, as well as a community leader in this great town. And I look forward to working with the caring staff and all of you moving this school forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Next item on the agenda, discussion in a vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Demonic.
We talked briefly about this upstairs, S C R twenty eighteen oh six, the fiscal note for the ISKE contract, it's not ready yet. I would move that we be table it for two weeks, please.
Mr. Demonic makes a motion to table. Second by Mr. Fiorillo, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six, zero.
Next was S C R twenty eighteen oh seven, Northwest, Northwest Rhode Island School District Consortium. We talked about this a few weeks ago, about the district joining the Northern Collaborative, not the collaborative, but the, the group here, Lincoln and so forth. And is a contract that's come for us to sign and for Mr. Mitchell and I would move that we sign the contract that passed upstairs, three to zero. The only financial stipulation is if we accept three students from the, from the consortium, that their tuition would only be five thousand dollars for those three students. But we could send students there as well. So, I would move passage.
Mr. Demonic recommends passage. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorillo, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six, zero.
Next is S C R twenty eighteen oh eight, the town referendum for school building upgrades and repairs. I ask that this be tabled for two weeks, please.
Thank you, Mr. Demonic. Mr. Demonic is making motion to table S C R two thousand eighteen dash oh eight. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dennan, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you, Mr. Demonic. Next item on the agenda, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Vogel. Mrs. Vogel, we're gonna move your chair over to this, you should sit on this side.
I prefer not to have to stand up here. So, I have a few personnel recommendations for you this evening. I have two retirements and a resignation. So, I request the advice and consent of the school committee on the retirement of Robin Batista, paraprofessional at community school effective June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, after twenty years of service. Kath Steinkie, paraprofessional at community school effective June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, after six years of service. And the resignation of Dina Sarah, building administrator at BF Norton Elementary School, effective June twenty ninth, twenty eighteen.
Mrs. Vogel, is that three recommendations?
Yes.
On the agenda, we have two. One building administrator and a retired, okay, I apologize, of two. Though I looked quick and the one threw me off.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Dennan makes a motion to accept the personnel recommendations. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Hess, all in favor? Against? The eyes have it, six, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Vogel. Next item on the agenda, this meeting's just flying by, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Demonic.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak about the town council meeting last week where the mayor had grant money set aside for the Cumberland School Department. And in order to balance his budget and do what he wanted to do, he took the money away from the school department without even notifying us that the money was available to be used. And obviously, we got programs going on at BF Norton with E L L, you know, with parents that could have gone further in this town here. And I think it's very disdignuous that the mayor, without notifying the school department, would automatically just remove those funds. And I think it's wrong. Thank you.
Mr. Demonic, I agree with you a hundred percent and I appreciate that you brought that up tonight. Should be of public record here. Anyone else? Mr. Hess.
If you'll indulge me for a few moments.
Please.
Related to that meeting, since the fourth estate isn't what it used to be, I wanted to clarify a quote attributed to me in the Valley Breeze from last night, last week's meeting. This week's Valley Breeze ran a quote based on a comment I made at last week's town council meeting. But the quote they choose to use missed the mark on what I was trying to say as it relates to taxes. As the mayor and the town council debated a lower tax levy than previously envisioned, I got up to the microphone and suggested they were missing the point as it relates to taxes. If the focus is solely on having taxes as low as they can mathematically make them, rather than as low as they can be while properly funding services which residents want. This is why taxes exist, to fund government services for the taxpayers. It's my personal opinion that taxes should cover the cost of providing the services we require in the manner we require them and at the levels we require as taxpayers. Had the reporter listened to the next words out of my mouth after the quote he chose, he might have understood and thus printed the crux of my argument, but unfortunately, this did not happen. As I said directly after the comment the reporter chose for his article, quote, "Taxes should be the lowest it takes to get the services we want delivered at the level we want them," end quote. Not more, but not less. I know that it's not as sexy or controversial of a soundbite as the reporter chose for his article, but they were the very next words out of my mouth and represent my view on taxes and virtually everything else I spend money on. Charge what it takes to do it properly. This is why I have advocated, along with others, on behalf of increased school funding. Not to increase funding for the sake of increased funding or achieving some arbitrary number, but to have the funding it takes to deliver the services at the appropriate level. I wanted to clarify my comments as they were said in my role as a private citizen, and so they don't negative, negatively reflect on the committee or administration who works so hard to deliver the best education possible with the resources available. Thank you.
Mr. Hess, thank you for that update. Anyone else? School liaison, school committee comments, school liaison reports. Mr. Mitchell, do we have executive session?
Do not believe that we do, Mr. Chin.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to adjourn. Pleasure of the committee. Mr. Hess makes a motion to adjourn before Mr. Fiorillo could get a word in. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorillo, all in favor? Against? Eyes have it, six, zero. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.